Good evening, everybody. We'll start today's meeting from the Lynn Zone Board of Appeals, March 4th, 7:00 P.M. If we can have a roll call for attendees, please.
Member Paez? Member Marci? Member Gilbane?
Here.
Member Christopher?
Here.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Maggio?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
And Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Before getting started with the cases that we have, for the meeting minutes from the last meeting that we held, is there any motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
One second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we can get started with our first case tonight. We're starting with case number 10096, 39 Lynch Door Drive.
39 Lynch Door Drive, parcel number 102554011. Petitioner Gary Hartwood, 39 Lynch Door Drive, Lynn, Massachusetts. Buyer attorney Samuel A. Vitale. Petition pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6, for a finding to permit the operation of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by an addition with a private garage. Finding that such use is in the Hartwood Single Family District is not substantially more detrimental than the current use pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 6, on a lot with 4,987 square feet and 78.4 feet of frontage, with the addition and private garage with lot coverage in excess of 38%. It has one three point seven percent and less than the required rear and right side. God's finding that such alterations are not substantially more detrimental than the current use to the neighborhood Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 6, states pre-existing non-conforming structures, our uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit-granting authority that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Attorney General Vitale. I had previously filed with the clerk a letter seeking a continuance so that we could revise, have an opportunity to revise the plan. There were some concerns expressed by neighbors who are buddies on two streets. And so with that in mind, the petitioner has submitted the plans to the architect for revisions. And it may well be that we will need some of the relief that we have. If you concur, you must have a continuance to submit us the revised plan.
To April 1st, you wanted?
Excuse me?
You wanted to April 1st? Is that what you said in your letter?
Yeah. Architect's schedules later on.
Make up. You just can't. I move to continue this case to April 1st.
Got motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second. If we can have a roll call.
Yes, Member Gilbane, to continue?
Yes, to continue.
To April 1st. Member Christopher, to continue?
Yes.
Member Olson, to continue?
Yes, to continue.
Member Crowitz, to continue?
Yes, to continue.
And Member Lopez Hernandez, to continue?
Yes, to continue. All right. We'll be moving on to the next case that we have on file, case number 10098, 28 Arlington Street.
28 Arlington Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Parcel number 054721011. Petitioner Rafael Batista, 13 Mason Street, Salem, Massachusetts. Buyer attorney Samuel A. Vitale. Petition pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6, for a finding to permit the reconstruction of and alterations to pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling damaged by fire. Finished attic and basement of the 4,277 square foot lot in the R4 district. Less than the required frontage and right side line findings that such reconstruction and alteration are substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structures, our uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit-granting authority that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental in the existing non-conforming use of the neighborhood.
Thank you. I'm Attorney Vitale. This is Rafael. He owns the owner's property. I think I have enough plans that would show. This home has been there for private adoption zone, considering land. It's a record claim that shows it. The one difference is there's not a state wind in mind. But 1928, there was a sale. When here, there were two or three reasons why this is red.
That's your agenda.
Okay. As you read, the home was damaged by fire. And as you know, you have one year to rebuild under the zone ordinance, a property that's been damaged by fire. The reason we here is that we rebuilt, we had to rebuild identically what was there. The only change there's no change in the footprint of the building, but there is a change in the exterior with a couple of dormers on the roof. One and a half for the district, which is one that allows height as much as 60 feet. And the two changes that are also, as you read in the notice, is that it's still two units. The difference is that the attic would be finished and the basement would be finished. So because it's not identical to what was there before the fire, even though it's still a two-family dwelling and all those dimensional variances that are listed are the result of the fact that the building has not changed its footprint and the lot hasn't changed, that's what's there. So it was pre, under the current zoning, it's non-conforming because it doesn't satisfy the current requirements for lot size, frontage, because there was no zoning when it was built. So what we're looking for with respect to what's called 486 finding is that the state zoning law and also the Lynn Zone Ordinance provide that a non-conforming building can be altered to chapter what's called a 486 finding. That 486 finding is what Mr. Olson read, which is that what is proposed is not substantially more detrimental. It's got to be substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood than what was there. I would suggest to you that it's not at all detrimental because what was there before is a two-family and what's going to be there again is the two-family. The difference is there'll be a couple of dormers on the roof and the attic will be finished and the basement will be finished. The two units will be the first floor and the basement, the second floor and the attic. But because they weren't finished before the fire and the building permit that he sought was to finish those, the building department said he needed to get it repaired. And that's why we, he and his unit, instructed getting the finding that making that change, which hasn't changed the footprint of the building, doesn't change the use, but does change the interior in the ways that I've suggested in the show on the plan. It's not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood. I don't know, does anybody here know about the neighborhood? I doubt. I did speak to Councilor Diana Chakoudis, who represents this area, to see if she had any inquiries or calls, and she told me no.
I have a question. Is it time? Is it our time to ask questions?
No, you can ask.
Has it changed the bedroom count in any way?
That I don't know the answer to because I don't have the... Wait, I think the plan does show what was there before and what was there subject. Yeah.
I think it did. I just don't remember. Thank you.
Yeah, so the answer is yes, it does. I'm doing this for memory, but there's an existing and there's a proposed. Yep.
Okay, so how does that change the parking requirements? Because that would change the parking requirements, right?
No, the parking requirement is based on the number of units, which is 1.5 per dwelling unit. We have three. Right before the fire, the parking requirement's zero because that was a use that was in effect prior to April of 1964. There was no... So whatever use you had then, if you have the same use, the parking requirement is zero. But once you make a change, then you have to conform to the current requirement, and that's 1.5 per dwelling unit.
Is that... Okay, that was my mistake. I thought it was per bedroom. But per... It was 1.5.
Actually, I think the parking... Yeah.
Yeah.
But there is a change, it seems. At least on the first floor here, the plan, there was originally a dining room, a living room, two bedrooms, the kitchen, pantry, and then it's going to be three bedrooms, then the kitchen, and then a rearrangement of outer access. Okay, the building. So an additional bedroom, at the very least, for the first floor. Any other questions from the board?
So the... So you're going to have occupancy of the basement, occupancy of the attic?
Correct.
So dimensionally, it meets all the requirements, you know, seven-foot ceilings and...
That's a building code issue. Yeah, but the answer is yes.
Yeah.
And all the egresses? All the egresses?
Yeah, I talked with Francisco. Yeah, there are two means of egress. Actually, if you go from the basement, you can go up the stairway, but there's another way out. And also, even, even... Well, it's not zoning. We've talked about this before. The so-called, well, I call them the dive windows, but they're emergency windows. They're all on the plan for any room that's a bedroom.
Okay.
Is there any landscaping, parking plan with that in?
Prosectionals. We have the floor plans.
Yeah, there's a block plan that shows the parking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, see that? Anybody else interested in looking at? So you're rebuilding the existing building and then adding dormers and finishing the basement and the attic space? Got to reconfigure in the inside?
Yeah.
Re-signing, and then what are you doing for landscaping? It's a little bit. With the fire and everything, it's a bit rundown. You're building the porch in the front?
Yeah, we will both porch, the new porch in the front. It's going to be the same, it's just going to be new.
Yeah, okay. So you're keeping the same footprint? Because it looked like it goes right out to the back of the side.
I think the landscaping issue is also relevant too. Because it's kind of, it's kind of run down. So I think you'd want to espouse it up a little bit for some landscaping for the neighborhood.
I just want clarification, Attorney Vitale. So the reconstruction is for a two-family building. The use will still, the intended use is still the same in order to not be substantially more detrimental. The basement will have bedrooms. The first floor will have bedrooms. The second floor will have bedrooms plus the attic. But it's still being considered a two-family. So how would the two families, it's just basement and first and then second and attic? Okay.
So the
Okay.
The configuration of a dwelling unit is the following. A bedroom, a bathroom, and a kitchen. In the kitchen, there's a sink and a stove. So if you get that, that's a dwelling.
Yeah. So both dwelling units are going to be at least four bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. All right, questions for me? Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else in favor? Right, anybody against the petition that would like to speak from the public? Anybody against? All right, then, what is the wish of the board?
Move to approve the petition.
Start.
I move to approve the petition.
We got a move, a motion.
Like to add the stipulation of landscaping.
Landscaping plan.
Are you okay with that stipulation?
Well, I don't know if they need to show us a landscaping plan, but I would require that they do some new landscaping.
New landscaping.
Since we didn't see a plan.
Do you also second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll second.
Member Paez, to grant with the stipulation of landscaping? Member Olson, to grant with the stipulation of landscaping?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Member Christopher, to grant with the stipulation of landscaping?
Yes, to grant.
Member Crowitz, to grant with the stipulation of landscaping?
Yes, to grant.
And Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant with stipulations. Okay. We have concluded with another case. Happy night.
Thank you. Good luck.
We have our next case, case number 10101, 334 Western Avenue.
334 Western Avenue, Lynn, Massachusetts. Parcel number 071683003. Sorry. Eater? 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 Eater Hurtado. 334 Western Avenue, Lynn, Massachusetts. Buyer's agent, Representative Abraham Alvarez to vary pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 10, provisions of the City of Lynn ordinance to allow the conversion of a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in the R2 district. Multiple dimensional variances are required for lot size of 4,193 square feet, where 12,000 is required. Frontage of 40.85 feet or 75 feet is required. Side yard setback of two feet, where seven and a half feet are required in maximum building area of 31.26%, where 30% is maximum allowed. The petitioner also requires a variance from Section 9 of the Zone Ordinance, requiring two parking stalls. Where there does exist a single compliant off-street parking in or the proposed parking does not meet the dimensional requirements of Section 9. All spaces are not more than five feet from the property line. And one is constructed partially under the enclosed porch building. All spaces require backing out on the Western Avenue and the lot also does not possess the required parking spaces or buffer.
Good evening. Because I know I could ramble a lot, I decided to write my notes off. So I'm going to just go ahead and read it out. So, good evening, Attorney General Vitale. My name is Indi Aguirres and I am the project manager with Inco Construction LLC. With me today is Abraham Alvarez. We're here representing Mr. Eder Hurtado. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present you this evening. And I promise there will be five minutes or less, hopefully. As you mentioned, the property is located in an R2 district and is a pre-existing 1926, pre-1926 structure. And it has currently a longstanding curb cut in place for many years. The code, there were code violations and compliance issues currently. The violations were issues for unpermitted work on the property. But the Fire Department government outside violations were corrected and approved by the Fire Department and Inspection Services. And Mr. Hurtado is currently legally occupied as a first floor after passing inspection, of course. And the second and third floor remains unoccupied. So the reason that we're here, as you mentioned, we're trying to legally convert this from a single-family to a two-family and bring the structure fully into compliance with zoning with the zoning codes and regulation as well as the building codes. I haven't heard this in a long time. The variance requirement, as you mentioned earlier, is for the lot size, frontage, side back, setback, side yard setback, lot coverage and property requirements. The key improvements that we will be doing on this property if approved is a full safety and compliance renovation, ensuring the property meets all modern requirements. Proper permanent and inspection, of course, will be done. Our work will be legally documented and reviewed. Similar lot sizes, and one of the research that we did in the neighborhood is that 43% of nearby properties have lot sizes that anywhere from 4,000 to 5,000 square feet. About 28 of them are a single-family with similar lot constraints. And about 17 of them are also having some standard parking issues. We did do a little bit of, a little bit more research in terms of like the MBTA bus stops and stuff. It's about 250 feet away from this property. So it's really accessible to public public transportation, what have you, and several, what you call it, shopping areas. It's really a wonderful neighborhood. There were some recent approval in the neighborhood and a lot of the properties that were recently approved were anywhere from 4,500 to 4,100 and none of them would meet in the 12,000 square feet. The part of the reason that also further request of the variance is that this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure that built before the modern zoning rules were put in place. Lot dimensions cannot be changed. Physical constraints prevent compliance with lot size, frontage, and setback regulations. The street ordinance application creates an undue hardship on the property owner. Full compliance is impossible without relief due to the building's historic footprint. And the minimal impact of the lot coverage in variance, the proposed lot coverage, slightly exceeds the 30%. But the increase is minor, does not meaningfully impact the open space in the neighborhood. The small overage and imperfection. Small overage is not noticeably from the street and maintains the character and integrity of the surrounding properties. And the renovation aligns with existing neighborhood patterns and similar approvals granted by Zone Board of Appeal. This is an owner-occupied property. Mr. Hurtado is in his house. Owner-occupied and they will remain long-term in the property. The owner-occupied properties tend to have, most of the time, higher maintenance standards and stronger community ties and ensures better safety and compliance with regulations. And finally, in terms of financial investment, we, Mr. Hurtado is planning on investing close to $100,000 of improvement onto the property and to make sure that he meets all of the necessary requirements. But in closing, we want to say that this renovation, if granted, will create safe co-compliance with the two-family and enhances the neighborhood stability and owner occupancy and maintains neighborhood character while addressing existing violation and consistent with past zoning issues. We respectfully request that the board will favorably approve this request. We know that there was a number of issues with the property and we put that information in the package and Mr. Hurtado has hired us to I said to my husband, the way the cleaner, to make sure that we follow the necessary rules and regulations and we hope that we're getting favorable approval from the board this evening. And Mr. Hurtado will sit and answer any questions.
Thank you.
So please tell me, you're the owner?
No.
Sorry, I'm project manager with Inco Construction. Not here.
He just tried to ride the rock.
Yeah.
All right, opening up questions from the board members? So I saw that there was an illegal addition onto the back of the house.
Yes.
How, is that part of the current footprint? Was that ordered to be torn down? What's the status with that?
You start off with that. This is part of the proposal. In order to, because we left the second and third floor intact, we just upgraded the car from an upstairs to a bedroom in order to have everything.
But we're hoping to get approval to legalize it because there was a number, prior to us coming into the picture, there was some number of work that was done onto the property without the necessary permits. We did inform Mr. Hurtado leaving that we put it on an exception unless we legally do this, so all the work has to stop until for their approval.
Also, I put my [inaudible] to check the back front door. And we have the [inaudible].
That the illegal addition is in fact built up to come?
Yeah.
And do you have that information that we could...
I provide that to [inaudible].
I don't think, I don't know.
We can get a copy tomorrow when we know somebody to [inaudible].
What is the extent of that addition? Doesn't know what was.
It's about it's about 10, 12 by 12 by 12. 12 by 10.
Yes, with, what does it entail? Like the back of the building with the kitchen stuff? Second floor?
So below that?
And you talk about the deck that was built in the back of it? Or you talk about the kitchen and so on?
Anything that was
Yeah.
Added to. Okay, so it's that kitchen area in the corner?
What about these bay windows on the sides of the house? Are those added? In bays?
So they, a lot of pieces were there and it appears that he was doing a number of those work, but...
They really concern me. I'm surprised, actually, the fire department didn't say anything about this because I don't think they can get their equipment by there if they need to get in the back. That really concerns me, is that bay window right there? And you talked about the fire department approving the car from the outside issue?
Yeah.
But we haven't seen any paperwork from them. All I have is a letter from the fire department saying that there's penalties issued, that if you don't change it.
We've been working, I've been working
Okay.
Is there any communications, a letter or something from the fire, the car van, or ISD thing that those have been addressed? And they're feeling good with that?
So I have one, if you allow me. I have a [inaudible] sent to us by the special services. But in terms of all of the notices that we can also work with because they just discussed several times to make sure that we meet those compliance [inaudible].
Yeah, it's not that we don't believe it. It's we have to cover our own ground too, so
I agree.
We would like to see those approvals in some way, even if you have to re-contact the fire department and ask them to send another letter to cover the first one that we saw.
Okay.
Okay.
Because they sent you the notices.
Right. Right. Okay. Right. Yes.
The
How did you correct that?
None. And there's no one to prepare any reason for any of that. There's work that needs to be done to make sure that that meets the necessary compliance.
Okay. So that all of you can sign with anybody?
Yes.
I have, I literally have [inaudible]. It's also a perfect and essential service for me to do.
But it's all [inaudible]. Sorry.
So I guess, so the addition seems to go closer to the property next to you. So while the, while the structure is pre-existing, and I see that, The, so while the, while the structure is pre-existing and I see that, the fact that you built closer to the, uh.
He built.
He built, I'm sorry. That, that wasn't pre-existing and I don't know that we would have approved that even if you had come to us before we, uh, before you built it. Um, and, and we're kind of in a, in a hard spot now because we're saying, okay, you know, we, we don't want to provide, uh, subject the petition into hardship, but at the same time, you've built what looks pretty close to the, to your neighbor's property. And I, I don't mean you when I say you. Um, and, and that kind of puts us in a tough spot. I do agree, it looks like there wouldn't be much space to get, if you were in the back. I'm assuming there's a yacht in the back.
The, the, uh, this, this, it was beyond the footprints, because, uh, and the bottom was as part of the structure. So the, the only thing we had to offer to, uh, to the, to enable what, uh, the upstairs for porch.
The deck, the people are still walking down the stairs right next to somebody's house.
But the kitchen, it's not down the deck.
Yeah. A- and, and that, and that's, I guess, my perspective is that's what makes us different than a lot of the other, uh, situations that you raised in that, you know, the, the structure is pre-existing and I, I get that and accept that and think you should be able to do with it what you will, but when you build it in a legal addition and then say, we, this is the way it is, it's a different thing.
Would, would there be, and the question in the back is because of that, uh, the number of things that were built prior to, um, a second, would there be any consideration of, we work with Mr. Utado to remove that, um, deck that he built illegally in that space so then it opens back up to use?
It would change it for me. I, I can only speak for myself, but.
I think that that's a, a question that we should definitely entertain and I would be interested as well. Um, I'm curious to know if from your end, having visited the property and working with Mr. Utado, if you have enough information to make it clear to us, maybe on an updated set of plans to highlight, show in some type of red or something, which parts of the property once you started working with them, uh, were already being built out so that we know what was actually pre-existing, non-conforming versus what triggered, uh, ISD's involvement and then what is being proposed? Does that make sense?
It, it does. We're given an opportunity to come back with that, with our mark and give you those answers to those questions actively, uh, to do that.
Yeah, because I do have sincere concerns about that bay window on the side is really tight. I don't even know if they can bring a ladder by there.
So we will address the bay window, the deck in the back, the, the, there was something else that.
Um, a letter from the inspectional services and the fire department.
Yep.
Um, saying that he'd been working with you, you know, clarifying that they have been working with you to get through the problems.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing, so you're saying he's living there, is he renting the other space? That was, that was another question.
It was shut down by, by the city, so the only one that's occupied this space right now is Mr. Utado.
Is he planning on renting this space?
He's hoping if, if it gets approved, yes, he's hoping to, to, once they're told that there's enough renovation that needs to happen and then he's hoping to rent.
He's hoping to, uh, we say, uh, we took the fourth and second floor, uh, break the second floor.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So I, I have a question regarding the plot plan. It looks like there's a fence along the, the sideline where the addition is put along that property line. Is that, who owns that fence? Do you know if it's the property owner in this case or the neighbor? So, and what is that fence consist of right now?
Let me see, there's, uh.
Is it an older fence, a new fence? An old one? So, and it looks like it, it sort of runs skew, so it kind of squeezes closer to the building as it runs down the property. Uh, I'm thinking that that probably should be replaced along the property so fire has access to get to the rear of the house, but also improve the aesthetics where you're so close to that property.
Yeah.
In the back, you have these stands that sort of wrap around into that alleyway. So it creates another sort of obstacle for fire to get to the rear of the house. So they can kind of reconfigure it so that the landing comes down before you get to that six point four space in the back.
Or turn it the other way.
Uh, that would, that would at least allow them to sort of run up and get around to the rear because it's also a concern on the other side hoping at least they can get around and get to that.
I just have one reason, okay.
Yeah, that's open, that they can get in and out of quickly.
Yeah.
So a little tweaking on the, of the plot.
Okay.
The, uh, the.
Is, I'm sorry?
Existing.
It is existing now, but did he add it?
It was pre-existing.
Pre-existing. Wow, okay.
I can remember that ear, but I think.
You can see by the foundation on the bar.
Something, it's a pretty old, it's pretty old. Thanks.
So that, that would be two things I'd like to see sort of cleaned up.
So then clean up the deck side, yeah, clean up the deck side.
They've got a budding fence so they're, you're not approaching.
In the back.
On their quality line.
Possessing.
David Costello, yeah. Okay.
Or any of these sickens or any?
No.
But that shows on the plot plan that fence in, in the stairs.
Okay. Right. So, uh, one more question I just wanted to ask just for our verification. Um, so he does intend, if he can, to rent out the above space, um, if he can get this approved through, uh, uh, okay. So my question is, is this planning to be affordable housing? Since you are supposed to the MBTA, is this planning to be affordable housing or is he just leasing it out on?
So I, I don't know how to answer that question, but he does have the option of renting out to an extension and what have you, but I don't know if he's planning to.
How many units would this be? Three total if two, two units?
There's only a two.
So, so the positive is that we have two.
Yeah. And this is the only.
Oh, no, I keep.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that's why we did even consider, think about, uh, affordable.
But it's, it isn't a question, but I'll present.
Yeah, it's, it's something to think about.
I'll present.
I don't know, I don't know, um, Mr. Cameron, do they get any, does the owner get any benefits from having an affordable housing unit to rent? Does he get any benefits in the city of him? I, I don't know.
I don't, I can't think of any, any benefits. The benefit is, uh, he can get a second unit if, if he pays into the affordable housing program or, or, or gets the median income. Uh, if he, if he already didn't comply with that, we're getting the second unit could be done. So there is a benefit. It's, it's a benefit of, of having a second unit complying with our.
Thank you.
Because here, I, we have to remember, you have to make a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, you'll have to add emergency egresses to all the bedrooms. So I'm just assuming you won't get a permanent unless you get that done, so.
Of course.
Yeah, because that's.
Did he buy the property with these condition, with, well, I, I understand he did the addition, but.
He's like, I'm wrong.
So he bought it as a simple payment?
He bought it as a simple.
And, and so that's what, that's what we're here to.
Fix.
Correct.
Any other questions? Um, what I'm hearing from our discussion and what we discuss is that we would probably like to move this case to a future date so that those requirements that have been voiced in order to have an updated discussion with updated plans, um, can happen. Um, is there a preference in terms of dates that you think there would be enough time to be able to gather everything that you need from your end?
The, the sooner the better, I think, Mr. Utado.
The next one that we have is March eighteenth. Is that enough time?
Yeah, so we, we go with it, yes, because, um, we have the full, we have the, this job getting the needs got shoes and letters and stuff and.
That'd be great.
March eighteenth then, okay. Um, do we have a motion or will, uh, continue this case till March eighteenth? All right, we have a motion. Anybody seconding?
Seconded it. Right. We'd like to add the stipulations that we're waiting for letters from the inspectional services, the fire department, um, or somebody else.
Can I read, can I read them?
Yeah, that'd be great because I don't remember.
So we asked him to, um, redo the plans and put them in red on the different changes. We asked about the bay window, the letter from fire and ISD.
Moving that staircase.
Okay, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
We asked about the fence on who owns it and would like the aesthetics of the fence to be, um, better.
Yeah, basically replace the fence.
Replace the fence, okay. Then we talked about the stairs in the rear, the landing coming down, um, for this, for before the six point. Uh, we talked about the deck in the back, clean it up. And then we talked about affordable housing. We talked a little, um, emergency egresses to all bedrooms. Am I missing anything?
I don't believe so, but before we go into a roll call, just due diligence, um, I'm going to ask, is there anybody else here from the public related to this case that would like to speak just to have it on record for this?
Yeah.
In favor?
In favor or opposed? In favor or opposed?
I would like to state what's going on before I say for or against.
Okay, yes, come on up.
What's his name?
Do, are you finished? Did you have something else?
Do you have a, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I wrote that joke.
Yeah, yeah.
So update a set of plans.
Thank you.
Don't say that, that's right, this, since it's already pre-existing. Um, yes, if you can say your name and, and answers, please.
Andrew Uzakonis, E-U-Z-U-K-O-N-I-S, one eleven Bayview Avenue, my backyard faces the backyard of the property.
Great.
In the spring, I went to inspectional services and asked them what was going on, whether there was a conversion going on at this house. Because there was an addition being added on in the deck. They said there was no permit.
Yeah.
Okay, so I waited a couple of weeks. Construction continued, nothing stopped. So it was like every two weeks I was going to inspectional services because the construction was unbelievable. Eighteen weeks of seven to seven work was being done. Saturdays and Sundays, which I found out was illegal unless you had a special permit for Saturday, but Sunday was a no, nothing done. After about six times at inspectional services, I went to the mayor's office. I went to the city council to get some, you know, the, uh, board counselor to do something. Every time I went there, my name and address was taken, my telephone number was taken, my email address was taken. I was never, never, the mayor's office, inspectional services, they said board counselor, nobody ever contacted me. You're looking at an addition that was put on this house with no permit, a deck that was built with no permit. Extensive, there was no permit.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, I think the city has required them to take everything out that was.
Yeah, well, that doesn't happen, that hasn't happened. Matter of fact, there's somebody living in it right now anyways, but that's another issue. Uh, I know my next door neighbor, who I talked to tonight and I tried to convince him to come, uh, he, he's at three thirty-two. Uh, we were calling the owners of this house, the, the, you know, the neighbors from hell. I mean, from all the work that was being done, all kinds of cement blocks were being sawed and the dust was going everywhere. I felt bad for the workers. They weren't even wearing masks and they were breathing in all of this stuff. Uh, it's just, I'm, it's just, I'm, I'm just disappointed. I, I really, I feel as if everybody's being duped here and, and, you know, there's extensive, extensive plumbing and electrical work that has been done in this house and I'm sure it hasn't been inspected. I don't think anything has been inspected. I know there was a basement apartment that was built and somebody was living in. There's a, a letter that was sent to inspectional services that said that they felt that this building was a rooming house and, you know. So, I mean, that, I just felt when I got that notice in the mail, for the last two weeks, this has been eating my guts out and I felt as if I just had to come here and explain what was going on, you know, and what, what's been happening and, and nobody did anything. And now they're asking for permits to, to continue. It's all built. The extension is built, the deck is built, the basement apartment is built, all kinds of work has been done in the house, you know, eighteen weeks of work. I mean, that's, that's a lot of work and, uh, I don't know what to say. I, you know, I just, I'm just extremely disappointed that something like this would happen, you know?
I would be really disappointed that inspectional services didn't respond.
Well, the thing was, when I went to inspectional services and, and, there's a lady there that I think is the supervisor, the clerical supervisor. She would tell me, what do you want me to do? There's no, there's no inspector. There was one inspector and he was seemingly always on vacation. And so this is, this is the response I was getting from inspectional services and, and that's, you know, what can I say? I mean, when you're trying to duce the, the light thing and, and everybody's just kind of like ignoring you, I, I just don't know.
Well, I personally thank you for.
Yeah. Just, just to follow up, um, there, you know, in, in the file here, there is, there was an inspection done on July sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, a list of violations of electrical plumbing, failure to have a lodging license, a Lynn license, sprinklers, building permits, electricity, gas, state sanitary code. They shut the gas off, they shut the electric off, they shut the water and they gave them a notice to vacate until these things were addressed. They went, they, they went back. So, so they went and they corrected some things for one of the units so the owner could move back into that one unit. The remainder of those renovations have yet to be corrected, all of them, and they're here to ask permission to correct.
The only, only resident, only person, the only unit that is occupied right now is the one that was no, had no permit. That's the extension to the existing building along with the, the deck.
Yeah, in order for them to get occupancy of that area, it, it had to be re-inspected after that work on that unit was completed.
How do you inspect, may I ask? And I'm, and I'm.
You have to ask.
Not trying to be an ass in any way.
Right.
But how do you inspect and give an, uh, uh, an okay to something that was built without a permit?
And I hear you, but we're the zoning boards, so we're tasked with.
I, I understand.
Determining of the zoning.
I understand.
That's definitely.
But the thing is, is that I felt as if I needed to come here tonight and state what I stated.
And I, I think your concerns are appreciated and, and I'm glad that you did voice it because eventually it did get addressed and the, and the violations were corrected.
And we will be having another meeting to this month to be updated.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, thank you for coming. Um, is there anybody else who would like to speak in relation to the petition? Anybody in favor or against? Seeing none then, we will resume about, take a roll call for the motion we had on the tape.
Um, member Gilrain, with all the stipulations to, um, to continue it to March eighteenth? Okay. Member Christopher to continue to March eighteenth with all the stipulations?
Yes.
Member Olson to continue with all the stipulations to March eighteenth?
Yes, to continue with stipulations.
Member Crowe to continue?
To continue with stipulation.
And member Lopez Hernandez to continue?
Yes, to continue with stipulations. Yes, to continue with stipulations. All right, thank you. We have our last case of tonight. We have case number one zero one zero two, two to six Lewis Street.
Two dash six Lewis Street, Win Massachusetts, household number one zero two five five nine zero seven zero. Two Lewis Street LLC, David Chalboy, manager, two Lewis Street in Mass, by his attorney Samuel A. Vitale. Petition, Mary pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and Section ten. For a finding to permit the operation to pre-existing non-conforming mixed-use restaurant and residential unit building in the business district by the addition of a first floor dwelling unit with parking not in conformance with the required number and dimensional requirements as previously allowed, but not in conformance with the zone ordinance finding. Such alterations are not substantially more detrimental than the current use to the neighborhood. The property contains approximately four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three square feet of land with one commercial unit and one residential unit. Master of Law, Chapter thirty, Section six, states pre-existing non-conformant structures or uses may be extended all rolling, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority that such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The variant request requires, the zoning board appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape and or topography of essentially indoor structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner and that desirably may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without relifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
And we have a communication that we received today from, uh, Ward three councillor Allison that we would like to read before opening up the case and start delivering.
Yeah, Chairman Lopez Hernandez, as you are aware, I am the duly elected one-three city councillor for the city of Lynn. I wish to express my support for a petition, vary the Lynn zone ordinance to allow for the construction of an additional residential unit at the property at two six Lewis Street, which also houses Christopher's Cafe. I have known the petitioner for many years and he is a reputable local businessman. I have spoken with neighbors and abuddies who have expressed no opposition to this project. I would request clarification from the petitioner regarding the status of prior variance given to him by the zoning board of appeals for an additional residential unit on the upper floor. I have been advised that the petitioner has decided not to construct this residential unit on the second floor. If this is correct, I would request the zoning board of appeals approve this petition with the condition that the petitioner may not exercise the previous issued variance. Without such a condition, the petitioner or successor owner may have legal right to two additional residential units on this property. I am uncertain at this present time whether neighbors in the diamond district would support two additional residential units at this time. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Truly honest. Costantino, Coco, Alon.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Pretty good, Al.
Um, this is David Chow, the petitioner. Let me try to describe in two ways what this is about. This has been an unusual and unique lot. It's a triangular shaped lot, sort of like. And it's on Ocean Street, uh, in Lewis Street. Um, and this sort of goes down two tracks. So what, what the council understands is that the use of the restaurant and, uh, the way the business has been conducted is widely accepted in the diamond district by people who are patrons in the restaurant, people who are neighbors of the restaurant, people who know the history of the restaurant. The history of the building is that it once was bakery, once it was catering farm, was a restaurant, now it's a restaurant. My involvement began back during the COVID period when we did several, uh, remote hearings with respect to what the councillor's referencing as the previous decision. Then I think I came before this group, uh, to get an extension because what transpired with respect to the, uh, zone ordinance is the problem. So the lots never changed in this configuration, nor has the building really changed in its foot. What happened is when these people purchased it, they had been worked on without promise with respect to a upstairs apartment. And, uh, they undertook to correct that and then figured out it couldn't work. So they sought to get what was upstairs, uh, they didn't get two of ours. The history of the building was that there have been in fact two apartments and the business. Uh, in terms of zoning, uh, we satisfy frontage, which in the business district is fifty feet and you've got a hundred on like two streets. Uh, and the business district, you can build right to the clocking and, and the building takes up much of this. But when you then apply and listen in, so it's a mixed use building, so the non-conformity is the residential unit and the residential use. So what was attempted was to, for two units on the second floor. And then we got into a whole thing about, uh, egress with the architect, um, means of access, uh, and it went through in an attempt to satisfy the various building department, fire department and a variety of issues. Uh, I came back to you at one point and got a six months extension, hoping that we could resolve that, but it didn't work. Uh, and so we sort of fell back to what we thought could work. So when I was here in the past, uh, and there were many Ocean Street neighbors here in favor. Uh, I thought that the concern would be the limited parking that we had. And we had talked about, and if you look at, there's a landscape patio garden. We, we could put parking here, but it's such a beautiful little area that the trade-off was made that you keep that and you would get at least two spaces, one for each apartment. And then with respect to the, this resident packing right here on the street, uh, and the business, the restaurant business has been tough since COVID. Uh, it has limited hours. Uh, the facility is used, as the council knows, for community meetings and others, uh, unrelated to the food business, but just to be a good neighbor and assistant group. So we, we've come back now with a plan that puts an apartment on the first floor, uh, in an area that was available to the rear of the kitchen, as I understand it, and the architect's plan is there. And, and so with respect to where we're at, we're seeking to get the same uses, mixed use with respect to residential business and to do with the packing that was approved previously, which is the two spaces that are, you can see if you come in, uh, on Lewis Street. So we really haven't changed the configuration other than putting the, the, this residential unit on the first floor to the rear of the kitchen. Uh, so, uh, but to do that, we're back to the old, if you've got a non-conforming use and you're extending the non-conformity, then you need what's called this forty-eight six finding, that what you propose is not substantially more detrimental on such factor than neighborhood. I don't believe there's anybody from the neighborhood who's in opposition, the Ward Council supports, which I would suggest to you that relationship to the, whether it's more detrimental or substantially more, I think the answer to that is no. And in terms of what is there, uh, this is probably a better solution because it fits and works. And I think we can satisfy any of the other jurisdictions that, like the building department, the fire department, the district calls.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
So is, is the use different than what you would apply for previously?
That's an excellent question. It's similar, okay? It's not the same. So there are differences. The difference is, is what we applied for before, the prior one that had two apartments and didn't work without a permit up on the top floor. They bought the building, they thought they could resolve. So we came in and got relieved to make that a, a unit. And then we ran into the issue of access, uh, the fire department, and we spent a lot of time and money with architects and people trying to solve, solve that. We gave up. And essentially said, we can, we can lines, linking space, but we can't make another unit up there. Which I think the building department was fine. But then, you know, honestly, he needs the revenue. So we looked at, uh, we had had a good experience with the neighbors in the past. So we said, let's see what we can do. So a portion of the restaurant business, which has shrunk. So this is putting that's that unit, that this unit now on the first floor. So from our perspective, it was the same as it was historically. Um, and we think it satisfies all the current requirements, which are different, uh, in, in terms of what you need to do now to satisfy the building code, the fire department, the rest. But in terms of the essential use, it's, we think it's the same as it historically had been. Except we're trying to do what the right. And to do that, we need to get this finalized and, and we need to get approval from the board of appeals. And I think that, um, we need, we attempted, we clearly recorded the prior decision and we attempted to exercise it, but we never brought it to fulfillment. And so to, to that extent, it doesn't, it no longer exists, even though I got the six month extension, that time's gone. And so we started over. That, that's why we're here.
Oh, just for clarification, is there a current apartment upstairs?
There is.
So there was already an apartment upstairs?
Oh, yeah.
You were trying to get a second one approved. It, it was approved, but you weren't able to get it.
Well, we couldn't, not on the second floor.
Right. So you couldn't, you couldn't get it past the meat code, basically.
Well.
Isn't that the code with, uh, the board approved it with the sprinkler system?
Yeah.
Timeline history of payments and do the entire building.
Yeah.
Which was above.
Yeah, we've got more than seven thousand five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
We have to put in a sprinkler. We had five thousand, I think, gross square feet. So the architect's position was we, we, under the building code, we don't.
You don't need to.
One, but the fire department had a different.
Yeah.
And then there was another question with respect to the, if we made a second unit, we would have a second egress fee. And there was some other exception in the, that the architect had in the, uh, in the, in the building code that said if you do this, but it got more and more. I mean, yeah, but that's the way it was.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So when I.
It's clear as mud, right?
Exactly. Two weeks ago, one of the building guys came out, he looked at it, he asked me to withdraw for the build out.
The program I think he sought was most to release.
Did you withdraw?
Yes.
Well, that was for like a building. That was for like a building permit or?
It was to, uh, build out the second apartment.
Right, okay.
And they said that if we wanted to, we could move forward on like mother-in-law or an extension of the living space.
Right, okay. So it's part of a one unit.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And that would have three floors.
So previously they approved a second unit zoning wise.
Yes.
Right? So I think what, um, I think what the, what the councillor in the district would like to do is, is basically should this get approved, that the condition would be is that prior approval for previous second unit would be null and void.
Correct. It would be two units, not.
He, he was through that on the recommendation, well, because we knew.
But it's, it's a matter of cleaning up paperwork. So when somebody else buys it, there, there's no sort of legacy.
Perfectly fine. Been there for seventeen years.
Yep. That's mid roof. He doesn't want to stop.
Um, I have a question in terms of the prior case, plain twenty, so the upper floor, there is no subdivision. It's physically still just a single unit? There's no.
It was subdivided. It is now a single unit.
And with three, okay, that's it now. And then the inference for the proposed unit now is on Lewis Street. Is that the doorway?
Yeah, there's a couple of.
Before the.
There's a slot for cafes. There's an exit door. It's also three rooms, right?
Um, so the door that you'd be looking at, it's a wooden door by the lattice where the car is parked.
Oh, okay.
And the white fence that is actually a tandem that allows official guards and, uh, so it's all which one.
All right.
So it does have two floors, the egress, one of them going out, the slider is in the back.
That's much better.
Pitch is perfectly implemented.
And, uh, just for.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Just for my application, what are your current hours?
So we're open. All right, we're trying to get my.
Just a few times.
Let's say through Saturday for making arrangements in the afternoon. Most of that is due to staff.
Good to know, because I'm just wondering if you're.
I guess. We're usually there calling on Saturday just to fix that party, but it was a five, it's been two years ago.
So I'm getting a safe call and he was making lunch and he said.
About the time you called.
Yeah.
In the rush.
I have successfully gotten it a few times. I'm just.
Hello, face.
Every time that I have biked, coincidentally, I don't spend it's not been open.
Answer that.
Um, yeah, I don't think I have any other questions, comments. Okay.
Is this space coming out of your kitchen or is this space that's just back there?
So it was originally done through the building department as an office space. Uh, that's a free hand, that I can reuse it for hosting small events, micro weddings and stuff like that. It's the backyard. And then when the parents.
That makes sense.
Everything more or less closed in on maybe in the space and then more or less just used as an office space, but it's pretty much under your laws.
Sure. Hey, you've got a point. About ten years, stop.
Same reason, I would hope my landlord just loves.
Um, there aren't any other comments or questions? And thank you. Um, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on the petition? Anybody in favor first?
Hello to the board. My name is Duncan Madeline. I have lived at forty-one Lynn Shore Drive since September of nineteen seventy-seven. At that time, the building we're talking about was Stone's Bakery, one of the most famous bakeries in all of the North Shore. Things to absolutely die for, as far as what they. They occupied the second floor of that building. They lived in the business itself. David was not the next owner. I think the two, before you go to. But anyway, David is an absolute wonderful asset to the community of the Diamond District. He volunteers as far as making things for the friends of Lynn and the Heart Beach, the Lynn Community Association and many other groups that you host at that bill. Um, he mentioned he wants to change the additional unit from the second floor to the first floor. I think that's a wonderful idea, especially for a senior person who would give their I T for not having to climb stevers as far as an apartment that they rent. He is an absolute asset to the community and I'm totally in favor of what he plans on doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Calvin Anderson, twelve Concord Street. This is my neighborhood and it's one of my favorite spots on Saturday or Sunday morning. Yeah, Monday and Tuesdays not open. Typical restaurant, sometimes they close on Mondays, you know, they gotta be closed sometime. But I, I support this and I like the idea that councillor Allen said. But I, I support this and I like the idea that councillor Allen said we thought out the paperwork to get rid of the already approved second story. So it cleans it up. But, um, I think that the downstairs would be a better thing anyway. I've been going by for years. I've been trying to peek in and see what's going on in there. So, anyway, yeah.
Did you give your name and address?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Anybody against? Nobody against? What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant with the, with the condition that the petitioner may not exercise the previous issued variance and that we would approve the second unit on the first floor with one unit on the second floor.
So I would second that. I have a question for attorney Almana. Is there something that the board can do, has done, like?
This would be a valid indication on this particular, uh, so it's in an ILO, there is a permanent extension act that was signed by the governor, uh, and it would explain I don't know if the president of that variance has been extenuating or not, but it's a suspended, uh, as an expedition with, with the, you know, to make a choice. It would obviously be outdated and sound like upstairs is possible.
Great. Thank you. So I would second that. Okay.
I'm gonna read that, please. Um, a condition to withdraw the, um, and they may not exercise the previous variance that was issued by the board and only one apartment on the first floor. Did I miss anything? In second floor?
One on the second.
And the existing remaining on the second floor.
Okay. Only one on the second. Okay.
Great.
Um, member payers?
Uh, yes, motion granted with.
Okay. Member Christopher?
Yes, agree with conditions.
Member Olson?
Yes, to grant the stipulations and conditions.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, Jim.
And member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant the stipulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I think those are all of our cases. Um, if we don't have any other business, um, only one thing coming up for next meeting, March 18th, we will be having our planning department here. The agenda will be added. Um, we will be having the presentation of the zoning code rewrite. So that'll be happening on the next meeting. Um, if not, then is there any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.